Here.
We are now live.
Here.
Chair Clow.
Present.
Commissioner Morondo.
Present.
Commissioner McGee.
Present.
And Commissioner Smith, I don't see him on.
Okay, so we'll move to the Pledge of Allegiance and Commissioner McGee, if you need this. I think the, we need to reflect that Bill Lucero is not present.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Lucero has resigned and is no longer on the commission's, commission. His, his resignation was effective immediately. That is an open spot at this point.
Okay, next we'll move to the approval of the agenda. Staff, do you have changes to the agenda?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, yes, I do. We would like to move case 2023-7653, vacation of a 44-foot wide public right-of-way and 38-foot right-of-way to a public hearing under new business. And discussion. For discussion. So it's not a public hearing, it's for discussion.
Any comments by commissioners? If not, is there a motion to approve? The amended agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Ryland?
Yes.
Commissioner Eaton Lawrence?
Commissioner Lawrence is fine and yes.
Commissioner Morondo?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee? The motion has passed.
Next, we'll move on to the approval of the September 5th, 2024 minutes. Are there any changes by staff or any of the commissioners to the minutes? Not? Entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Ryland?
Ryland.
Ryland?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Morondo?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Motion's passed.
Thank you. We'll move on to the September 19th, 2024 minutes. Are there any changes by staff, commissioners to the minutes? Not, we'll entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Ryland?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence? Commissioner Morondo?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Motion's passed.
Be possible to take all of the findings in Los Solares matter in one motion?
Thank you, Chair Clow. I would recommend that we do them all separately. I think that's kind of, that's how we've always done it. And I think that it would help make a clear record that each of them are adopted separately. Yeah, if we go through them one by one. They're not on the consent agenda, so I think it would be appropriate to do them one at a time. Sorry, it's a little tedious.
We're wondering in the future, could we move them to the consented?
Um, I, I think that is something we could do. That's what the governing body does, so that might be appropriate.
Yep, so we should discuss that because it's real tedious. It's findings, okay.
It is, yes.
Case number 2024-7899, Los Solares Master Plan Amendment, the findings and conclusions. Any changes to those? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Uh, no changes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Ryland?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Morondo?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Motion's passed.
Okay, now we'll move to case number 2024-7898, Los Solares Master Plan, Traxx 21, 23, 24, and 26, General Plan Amendment. Any changes to those findings and conclusions?
Uh, no changes from staff.
All entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Ryland? Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Morondo?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Motion's passed.
And, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Point of order, can I ask staff if, if we're taking good notes on who is making the motions and the seconds for our minutes?
Uh, Madam Chair, members of the commission, at the current time, no, but everybody is on Zoom and it is being recorded, so we will have a record. As long as everybody can, keeps their mic open and speaks clearly into the mic.
So we'll move to case number 2024-7900, Los Solares Master Plan Traxx 21, 23, 24, and 26, rezoning. Is there any changes to those findings?
No changes from staff.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Ryland?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence? Commissioner Morondo?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Motion's passed.
Um, case number 2024-8852, Los Solares Master Plan Traxx 19, General Plan Amendment. Any changes to those findings and conclusions?
No changes.
Entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Ryland?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence? Commissioner Morondo?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Motion's passed.
Next, case number 2024-8853, Los Solares Master Plan Traxx 19, rezoning. Any changes to those findings and conclusions?
No changes from staff.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Ryland?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Morondo?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee? Motion's passed.
Next is case number 2024-8854, Los Solares Master Plan Traxx 20, General Plan Amendment. Any changes to those findings and conclusions?
No changes from staff.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Ryland?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence? Commissioner Morondo?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Motion's passed.
Next is case number 2024-8855, Los Solares Master Plan Traxx 20, rezoning. Any changes to those findings and conclusions?
No changes from staff.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Ryland?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Morondo?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Motion's passed.
Next, we're moving to case number 2024-8342, 4851, Art Road Development Plan. Any changes to those findings and conclusions?
Uh, no changes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Ryland?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence? Commissioner Morondo?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Motion's passed.
Finally, case number 2024-8343, 4851, Art Road, Rain Management hearing. Any changes to those findings and conclusions?
No changes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Ryland?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Morondo?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Motion has passed.
Okay, now we'll move to case number 2023-7653, vacation of a 44-foot wide public right-of-way and a 38-foot wide public right-of-way.
Madam Chair, I believe we moved that to new business as a discussion item. So the next item up would be the staff communications, which would, which will be the presentations.
And, and this is Heather Lambboy, sorry to interrupt, Chair Clow.
Yes.
If I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Clow. So, sorry, I could not be present. COVID caught me and I don't want to share the joy. So, um, but I do want to make the commission aware of the fact that there is going to be a presentation of which I'll be a part, as well as former Commissioner Dan Pava at the New Mexico American Planning Association Conference in Albuquerque. Next week, there is a planning commissioner training piece or session that's going to be happening Friday morning. And wanted to see if the commissioners are interested. I'll be sending out an email. We were able to break that out, so it's a standalone session. So if there are planning commissioners who would like to join us in Albuquerque and hear from not only, you know, Dan and I, but also people from jurisdictions across the state, including Albuquerque and Rio Rancho and Roswell. So, um, so anyway, I will send an email and please let me know if you're interested in joining us and I'll cover the, the admission for you all.
Thank you. So you'll be sending the email out tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay, great.
And it's Friday, October 12th, I believe, or 11th.
About what time?
The session will start at 8:30.
Okay, so now we'll move to the results of the NOAA Heat Island Study by Dan.
So, thank you, Chair Clow and members of the commission. Oh, gosh. Have the fun, fun court issues as always. Okay, thank you. So I'm gonna go ahead and introduce this presentation, but actually we have the consultants who did the bulk of the actual analysis and created the report on Zoom that are gonna go through the results. So briefly, I'll just go through introducing it. So it's the Santa Fe Heat Watch Report is the official name of the, of the project. It was a grant-funded heat island mapping campaign, kind of a citizen science style project that was funded by NOAA. And then it was conducted by Cappa Strategies, who is on the line to present the rest of the project. So NOAA provided $14,500 in grant funds for this project. And then the City of Santa Fe Environmental Service Department covered the remainder. So it's, it's a, it's a bit of an interesting situation. It was actually initiated by the Sustainability Department, specifically former Sustainable Coordinator Allison Long. She's no longer with the city and there's actually not a director in that department either, so that's, department's fully vacant. So the planning department took it on. I was already helping on the side and then I kind of just became the main project manager after Allison left. But I definitely want to give a shout out to her because she actually wrote the grant application, won the grant, and then did a lot of the legwork in terms of volunteer coordination, route planning, and then the day of logistics. So I just want to give a shout out to them and they're still helping us wrap this project up. But we have, the planning department has taken ownership of the data and I'll, I'll get into a little bit more of how that's going to be implemented in the future. So Cappa Strategies is gonna give a much more detailed presentation about the process, but I just wanted to point out some of the, the ways that we identified point of interest was just to go through places when the city, throughout the city, that we knew were important to measure heat. And I guess I should back up by saying, I think you all are familiar with the concept of heat islands, but it's the kind, the, the effect of the built environment and the natural environment on the perceived temperature. So different parts of the city are gonna be hotter or cooler depending on the environment, both built and natural. So it's the feeling of it's really hot in the Walmart parking lot or it's really nice and cool down by the river. So we chose a bunch of different locations around the city, housing developments, and, and places where maybe people would be vulnerable to heat-related illness. So in District One, we chose kind of the obvious spots, Plaza Downtown, places like the Del Norte Trailhead where it has a lot of canopy coverage to get a really good baseline of an undeveloped area. In District Two, we looked at St. John's College, Medium Hill, the hospital being a big one, of course. D3, we looked at a lot of the parks, the Walmart Supercenter in particular, and all of the major commercial areas along Surry's Road. And actually, Cottonwood Village Mobile Home Park was, turned out to be one of, if not the hottest place in the city. And I think our, our consultants are gonna get into a little more details about why they think that is. Excuse me. And then in District Four, we had spots like the GCCC, the Santa Fe High, and Pete's Place. And so there's a lot of data in and around the Surry's Road. So from there, we, well, the consultants helped map an actual route that was driven by the volunteers and, and that connects all the dots and you'll see from the output how that data was extrapolated from, from that. So on the study day, we had, we originally had it planned for the 30th, but it actually turned out to be not hot enough. We kind of had a early monsoon, if you remember. And then we ended, so we ended up doing July 28th. We ended up with 28 volunteers in teams of two. They did six routes over three different shifts. Some volunteers did multiple routes. But yeah, that's how, that's how we got it done. So it was all volunteer-led. I did one, one route, a few other staffers helped out with, with others. So they give you this little measurement tool that you put on your car. And Joey from Cappa Strategies will explain how that it works. But then we drove these routes that we created and hit all the points of interest to try and measure the, the air, air temperature there. So yeah, next steps. Again, Joey's gonna get into the details of the results, but you can see here, this is what the heat island looks like for the afternoon. So that we did three, three, three temperature measurements, one in the early morning, one around 3 o'clock, the hottest part of the day, and then another one in the evening. This is showing the heat in the afternoon. The blue obviously being cooler, red being warmer. And then I've juxtaposed it next, next to the tree equity map for the city, just as an example of types of data that we can overlay with this and actually extrapolate different conclusions about the effects of trees on cooling the street, for instance. Or we could also overlay with zoning information or, or population density, all, anything and everything. So long-term, this, this data is gonna live with the general plan, digital user platform. It'll, it'll be part of our GIS mapping software and something you can turn on and off as part of the, the, that system and you can do your own analysis. I, I know that there are other departments are very eager to use this as well, besides planning. So water is particularly interested in using this to help with their water planning projects that they're, that they're doing. And they're looking specifically to see the impact of can, tree canopies on water conservation. And then another way that we can use this as a direct effect is planning response, public health responses to extreme heat days. As the city warms with climate change, we will need to start thinking about where are we gonna strategically deploy city resources to, to respond to that. So those are some, some of the ways we can use this data. And I'm really proud that we got this project done. And it's, it was something that we were already planning to do as part of the general plan update. And so the fact that the Sustainability Department went out and got a grant for it, took that off of our plate and gives us more budget money to do other planning activities. So that was, that was a win for us. So with that, I'll go ahead and hand it over to Joey. It looks like he's in space over there. So thank you, Joey, for joining us. And I think, can you, are you, are you live?
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, thanks.
All right. Can you see my screen here?
Yes, it's loading. You can go ahead and make it a presentation mode.
Okay, I'll keep it here as long as you can see it, all right. Okay, well, thanks, Dan, and greetings, planning commission. Thanks for having me here this evening. Excited to present on the results of our study. My name is Joey Williams. I'm with Cappa Strategies. It's Climate Adaptation Planning and Analytics. We're based out of Portland, Oregon. And I'm joined on my team by a group of social and environmental scientists. My background is in urban planning and climate adaptation. And we've been at this for the last six, seven years, working with cities, local governments, nonprofits, federal research entities, specifically NOAA, and have, and focused on extreme heat, specifically where our expertise lays, that we work across hazards as well.
Joey, sorry.
Yep.
You can just give me one second. I'm gonna bring you up on my computer so they can see you on a bigger screen here in, in the chambers.
Okay.
Give me one second.
Yep.
Okay, I think you're good now, Joey.
Okay, all right. Thank you. So a bit about Cappa. We are based out of Portland, Oregon. Like I mentioned, we generate data, develop tools, and design actionable strategies to accelerate community adaptation to climate change. And we envision communities, cities, and regions that are connected, informed, and climate resilient. We work on heat through a framework that's focused on holistic, data-driven, and equity-focused action and decision-making. This component of our framework is focused on hazard assessment, generating a heat map that can be used to drive things like cooling strategies based on place-based decision-making. This approach, we call Heat Watch, has been conducted in hundreds of cities and communities around the world now. It's a community-based mobile monitoring approach that allows for spatially rich data collection process. And this provides a snapshot in time of the urban heat island on typical heat island-conditioned days. As Daniel described, we followed a process here to design the study, incorporate places of interest from around the community. Outreaching engagement was conducted to recruit participants. This is a point where Daniel really picked up where Allison left off and we're very grateful to him for doing that so that the project could continue. And we found a day eventually where we found the ideal conditions for mapping and we were able to go out and collect those measurements. So that's where I'll pick up and go a little bit more in-depth as far as to what Cappa did and what we were able to generate with the results. I'll just show here a little bit more about our, our sensor and the routes that were driven. If there's any interest, we can come back to here, but I'll focus on the analysis and the results. So Daniel and his team were able to gather these high-resolution measurements, as you can see, planned up in the top right. And they, through our processes, become measurements on a map in the bottom right. And this shows us the distribution of temperatures from hot and cool across the area three times throughout the day. This is a sampling approach. So what we're aiming to do is to sample the different land uses and land covers across the area of Santa Fe and be able to correlate those with land cover information that we gather from satellites. So the satellite imagery is at 10-meter resolution. And this allows us to essentially model the air temperature and heat index across the area by combining the samplings on the ground that the volunteers collected with the high-resolution information from, gathered from space. So you may have seen satellite imagery, sat, uh, land surface temperature gathered from satellites previously. And I want to differentiate, this approach is aiming to get at what people are actually feeling on the ground, one to two meters above the ground, whereas land surface temperature is really looking directly from bird's eye view, reading temperatures from, from satellites and which, which we know can overestimate, underestimate the differences between land covers. So this approach is really focused on getting or at what do people experience on the ground as they're moving about. And when we see this having closer relationships to, to health information in regards to heat. So the specific results for Santa Fe, we generated, like Daniel mentioned, three time periods of data, morning, afternoon, and evening. So this kind of simulates the shifts in heat that we may see throughout a particularly hot day. And we, we tend to see different patterns that show up, some consistencies between time periods, some differences. What was really notable in Santa Fe was that we had a 14-degree difference on a day that had a high, high air temperature of 97. So that's quite a wide difference. And part of this, we would attribute to the changes in elevation in Santa Fe as you move from the southwest to the northeast. We know that this can play a factor in the temperature distribution. And what's notable here is that the, the southwest, southwestern portion of the map is the hottest, remains consistently the hottest throughout the day. And we see different areas pop up as hotter and cooler in the morning, which represents kind of the heat remained from the night before. So how the materials of the built environment have retained and absorbed the heat from the night before and the day before. And these are the areas that show up as the hottest in the morning. Of course, this is also the coolest period of the day. But into the afternoon, we see things start to warm up and we can start to see some more differentiation at higher temperatures. So where places are especially hotter and cooler, show up here potentially based on differences in land cover as well as elevation. So things like tree canopy cover, open space, commercial and industrial development, residential development patterns. And these things can all have an effect as well. It's definitely notable that the geography here was especially at play. This is, you know, we would see a different signal if we had a, a flat set of conditions, but we know there's this gradient playing out in elevation from, from west to east and south to north here. I'm gonna focus on mostly the afternoon results, hottest time period, and it was the largest differences that we saw. So focusing in on some of these particular land uses, we were looking at mobile home parks to start. So we noticed some of these mobile home parks are the hottest across the southwestern portions of the map. And some interesting differences here, we noted in this one mobile home park that stretched north to south and was laden with concrete, asphalt, low tree canopy cover. This is actually where the hottest measurements of the day were taken. And then we also looked at this, I think this was mentioned, the Cottonwood Village Mobile Home Park was also very hot. And you could see the kind of homogeneous development style here. And this was interesting in contrast to another mobile home park that was slightly older. I look up the, the ages of these buildings and the developments and this country club mobile home park is about 15 years older, meaning that the tree canopy there is likely 15 years more developed as well. And I noted significantly more tree canopy along the streets in these areas. And I went in on, on Google Maps on Street View and looked around and I could actually see shade being cast onto the streets here. And so that was really interesting in contrast to the Cottonwood Village is I didn't really see much shadow being cast onto the street and suggesting that these, these mobile homes are a bit more exposed and the people that live in them are more exposed to higher temperatures on this day as well. And so this may suggest that mature tree canopy cover is providing ample cooling. And of course, we want to emphasize that plantings require maintenance and care to reach maturity. And even in the hottest areas, like we saw across the southwest, there are pockets that showed up as, as cooler. And it may be related to these, these land cover patterns. So another land cover, land use that we looked at was parks and green space. And we can note that some, some of these places show up as cooler than surrounding areas as well. And we also noted that open space may be preserving some coolness as well. Of course, we, we saw patterns play out with commercial and industrial corridors also playing, also coming up as very hot. But this was a mixed effect with the elevation differences. So in the southwest, we saw a lot of residential development, the mobile home parks, et cetera. We saw industrial spanning up and then in this kind of middle portion of the map and some commercial and industrial along the way. So we saw these kind of hotspots stick out there as well. We looked a bit at socio-demographics. So this is the, on the right, the CDC Social Vulnerability Index, which is a, a kind of a assemblage of different factors related to social vulnerability, specifically in, in the context kind of a assemblage of different factors related to social vulnerability, specifically in the context of natural hazards. So we can see some tracking of the areas that are higher vulnerability in this graphic on the right with where we see some higher temperatures. And also where we see lower vulnerabilities with some of the lower temperatures. And so this may suggest some more needed outreach and heat health response. Like Daniel mentioned, in these areas in the southwest that are both especially hot and more vulnerable to natural hazards for socioeconomic reasons. Might also suggest here that areas in the northwest that are cooler and lower in vulnerability, these may be places to take advantage of in terms of a growing population, how to densify and also maintain tree canopy and open space. So repurposing and redevelopment strategies may be advantageous here where we see cooler temperatures. And especially with the advantage of higher elevation, this may be a place to target some kind of densifying. So that's it for kind of the initial glance at the relationships. So we see in land cover and heat data that were provided. Like Daniel mentioned, these heat data are available on an interactive web map. The data are also open access, so anyone can come in with access and and use the data, look at the three different time periods, look at the traverse measurements and also see the summary report that we can share around as well, that goes a little bit more into depth on the method, the role of community members in science. And then what Kappa has done in analyzing the data and producing these models. I'll just highlight briefly other next steps that we see cities take. There's a variety of kind of next steps in terms of analysis, looking at the spatial patterns, looking at relationships with health, especially maybe interesting. And then, you know, leading on to greater funding for heat action, looking at modeling of specific intervention actions, developing heat action plans that use these data along with supporting policy and social science work to develop a robust and holistic approach to tackling heat. Through this engagement process, of course, we are here, we're talking about this, we're moving the needle forward in many ways. And by enhancing the focus on heat, we saw media coverage on the campaign as well. And we hope that these connections that have formed in partnership with the community, between departments at the city, hopefully, continue and help to drive this discussion around heat. And yeah, so from here, really, this is a great place to be getting the connection to you all, the commission. And yeah, it's really a wide variety of actions that can come out from here. Kappa's role, we're happy to advise going forward, we're having to consult on various services. But really happy to be able to provide this initial glance at the results and glad to take any questions on the methods, the outcomes and what the results mean. Thank you.
Any questions? Commissioner Lawrence?
Just a clarifying question. I'm wondering about when you took these measurements, how long it took to get through the route? How much the measurements were simultaneous, if that might have had any possible effect on the measurements that you took?
Yeah, sure. So the measurements were taken simultaneously. So we present each hour period individually. So in the morning, the drivers went from 6:00 AM to 7:00 AM. And we remove any kind of temporal bias. So if, for instance, the sun is coming up and the area is warming, we're able to go in and treat the data to remove that kind of trend. So we basically, over the course of our, course of the hour in the end, have a simultaneous set of measurements individually at the morning, the afternoon and the evening. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
Any other questions? Not. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Joey. Thank you, commissioners.
That was a very interesting presentation. Now we need to see what we can do with it. Okay, so we'll move on to a presentation by Dan Escobal.
Madam Chair, since I'm running the meeting and my computer tends to give us trouble every time I'm at the podium, Janice has graciously accepted my asking for help. So she is making the presentation.
Okay, so Janice will provide us a presentation on the discussion of Chapter 14, Open Space Standards and Requirements. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. Janice Bletnikoff, Long Range Strategic Planner with the Land Use Department. As Dan explained previously, I am covering for him in this application because he has not yet figured out how to be in two places at one time. So my understanding is that this commission has requested information on how our department calculates open space when it is required of an applicant. So Dan has graciously put together this presentation. And hopefully this overview will explain things a little bit better, lead to a better understanding for our future cases we bring to you. So to begin, how do we define open space in the city of Santa Fe? We define open space as an outdoor area that permanently provides light and air and that satisfies in whole or in part the community's visual, psychological and recreational needs. So how do we get to dedicating open space or requiring open space? There are two routes to this. The first case includes when there is a special district such as an overlay district and the specific criteria within those districts can compel that open space is dedicated. And second is simple percentage-based processes. So this would be based on the requirements found in our Table of Dimensional Requirements for Townscaped Districts. The next type is when percentage, sorry, excuse me. Percentage-based if triggered. And triggered refers to the nature of the application and the proposal from the client. So this can be found in Table 14, 7.2-1, our Table of Dimensional Standards for Residential Districts. Also the same 3-1, the Table of Dimensional Standards for Non-Residential Districts. And Section 14-8.15, Dedication and Development of Land for Parks, Open Space, Trails and Recreation of Facilities. So open space requirements are all through our land use code. We're working on that in the code amendment. So we have a few examples to illustrate how we calculate open space. And the first example uses the Old Pecos Trail subdivision, which is in a special overlay district. So this is, this property was located in the, is located in the South Central Highway Corridor Protection District. And the landscaping standards for creating this kind of subdivision require that, to the greatest extent possible, existing natural landscaping shall not be disturbed within 25 feet of the property line that adjoins the street right of way. This area shall be labeled as open space setback. So as a setback, this can't have any structures or parking allowed within this area. Given that this area has to be set aside, we also allow that this be counted as open space. So you'll see in the next item that for residential permitted uses, a minimum of 50% of the lot shall be open space. So you'll see in the, I don't know if it's large enough to see or not, but in this graphic, the hash area is the buildable area that remains. The green area is the open space that is to be dedicated within each lot. And this is 50% of each lot. You can see that's roughly about 50% of each one. And along Old Pecos Trail, you can see that the setback is there as well. In the next example, this is a lot simpler. It's just a single-family dwelling. So in what case would a single-family dwelling require that open space be set aside? This is based on the nature of the request, if the proposal hits certain triggers. So in this example, this single-family home is in an R5 zone district. It's on a 0.15-acre lot. The dwelling unit is 2,000 square feet and the accessory dwelling unit is 1,000 square feet. So given all these elements of the proposal, the lot coverage would come out to 45.91%. Since in this zone district, it exceeds 40%, that triggers the requirement to set aside open space. So how much open space would they have to give? They would have to meet the standards here in A through E, meaning that 50% of the gross square footage of the dwelling unit would need to be met. The open space cannot be less than 12 feet in any direction. The grade of the open space is less than 1 to 10 foot, or sorry, 1 to 10 slope. The open space has to adjoin the dwelling unit for direct access. And ponding areas have to be outside of the open space. For this kind of development as a single-family dwelling unit, you cannot include the ponding areas or stormwater areas. So given these elements that need to be met, the lot coverage on this project requires 1,000 square feet of open space remain open. In the next example, we have again a subdivision. This is a much, much larger subdivision. And here, we are guided by two requirements. One is that land dedicated for neighborhood parks shall be based on a rate of three acres per 1,000 persons or per 500 housing units. And that land dedicated for regional parks, community parks, open space and trails shall be based upon a rate of 12 acres per 1,000 persons or per 500 housing units. So in this example that you see on your right, it proposes 174 single-family lots at a census-based rate of 2.5 people per dwelling unit. And using the formula you see on the left that takes into account the requirements that I stated before, this would require ultimately 1.31 acres of open space to be set aside. And the last example that we have is the simplest one. This is open space required for multifamily dwellings. So the Table of Dimensional Standards for Residential Districts requires that single-family dwellings or multiple-family dwellings allow for 250 square feet of common and/or private open space for each unit. So in this example, we have the Casa Verde Apartments, which is a 221-unit apartment complex at a rate of 250 square feet per unit of open space that is required. You end up with a total of 55,250 square feet as the obligation. In this case, the developer decided to exceed this and we saw a total of 130,361 square feet that was provided. So I hope those examples were helpful to you in understanding the ways that we approach calculating open space for various types of projects. And I'm available for any questions that you have. And Mr. Escobal is also available for questions. Thank you.
I have one question on the last example, the apartment complex. Does the parking lot compose open space?
No, parking lots are not allowed to be counted towards open space, neither are fire lanes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So first I want to thank you, Ms. Bletnikoff and Mr. Escobal for putting this together. It does not help me estimate what open space might be required, but it does help me a lot with understanding the basics, which is what I really wanted. And so I appreciate that. If I could ask, yeah, about a couple of these examples, first, this one, Chair Clow asked about the parking specifically. But can you just help me understand what are the parts that are included as part of the open space in an example like this? I am sure that it is the green courtyard area in the center. Is there anything else that would be considered part of that open space that is in that calculation?
I believe the trail along the southerly end there, it's landscaped with shade trees would count. But also any common areas, patio areas and general recreation areas that are either passive or active. And Mr. Escobal can illuminate you more on this.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Commissioner Lawrence. So when you're dealing with non-residential or when you're dealing with multifamily dwelling unit, open space, the first qualifying factor is the amount of open space per unit. You can do this, you can give it private open space, which means that something like this would have a balcony. Or they could have, if it was a sprawled out apartment complex like we've seen in the past, they can have their own yard as long as it equals 250 square feet. If they don't want to put balconies because they went vertical and it's just too expensive and too risky or they just don't want to do the construction, they can aggregate that 250 square feet and make it common open space. That common open space has dimensions within Chapter 14 that they have to, that make it qualify. And then 50% of that total open space has to be usable for the people to actually use it. So you can't just throw in a Royo in there and say it's your common open space. It literally has to be, 50% has to be usable. And either the land use director or even the planning commission can require, you know, cot lots or swings or trails within the easement or fire pits. Anything that should be in there that makes it usable for the people that are going to live there. What's not included, unlike non-residential or like commercial components, what's not in there are your landscaping within your parking areas, your parking areas itself. Because those don't qualify when you're meeting those minimum dimensional requirements for those common or those private areas. Common area has a minimum of 15 feet in any direction. So many of those landscaped little islands aren't going to meet those standards. So when they add, when they put them all together in this way, it makes it one big, you know, open space or park area for that development. And in many ways, they exceed. I haven't met too many that don't exceed the requirements. Usually most developers tend to exceed that because they know the value in that open space for their tenants.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I also wanted to ask, I think it was the example before this. Yes, this one. So this one calculated a large amount of open space, common open space, 1.3 acres. Is there also that private open space for the individual lots or is that all covered in the calculation according to the shared space?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Commissioner Lawrence, that's a great question. It does not cover the individual lots. That covers the amount of land needed in order to satisfy the infrastructure requirements for the subdivision. Each individual lot still has that private open space requirement if they breach that 40% lot coverage. In the larger or the higher density residential districts, instead of a max of 50% lot coverage, they get to go to 55% lot coverage. And instead of a 50% requirement of that dwelling unit gross floor area, it's 30%. And that's the difference between the two high-density and immediate to low-density districts that that require open space. But either way, it's still required on the lot.
Thank you. No other questions, Madam Chair.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes. Go ahead.
Thank you. Could you go back to the first slide that talked about the definition of open space from Chapter 14? I just wanted to go back to this because in Chapter 14, the actual calculation of open space, as we see, I mean, these are actually, I would say on the simpler side in a lot of cases. Example-wise, actual open space calculation is somewhat complicated. I think what's most important for our I think what's most important for our review is understanding the spirit of it. And one thing I want to emphasize, a lot of people think of it as green or grass or landscaping. It's not about surface, it's about satisfying. So it's basically something that people can use out that, that it is not of a dedicated purpose that somehow somebody could. And the other thing, you know, you separate in terms of basically the two criterias. The way I think about it is we have overlay zoning and then we have the triggered underlying zone requirements if you don't have an overlay zoning, right?
Madam Chair, members of the commissioners, Commissioner Miranda. You know, it's kind of interesting. The code has open space in various locations. You have, let's take it for instance, in the business capital district. Not every district requires open space, but those that do, you're going to see a ten percent of the lot area. Period. And it's to be put in the front. That's just a trigger. That, that's not a trigger. That's just a requirement. Very similar to the open space for, for Old Pecos Trail. Old Pecos Trail said you need a setback. You need to include that as open space. And on top of that, every lot's going to have fifty percent lot coverage. Period. Whether it's lot coverage, whether it's anything, you just do it. That's the same thing in some of those districts. In commercial districts for, in a C two district where you're going to have non residential, you're going to build some kind of use, commercial business of some sort. Twenty five percent of that lot is required to have open space. However, there are caveats to that because you can knock that down with passive or active water harvesting, bringing it down to either fifteen, twenty percent. So it, it, it's just different across the board. But when you look at all of them, you still have either a percentage based requirement. Either it's in an overlay, it's in a non residential district, or you have something that is triggered as a direct result of what you're putting on the property. It's one or the other. It, 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 there may be variations of both in some instances, but it's just, it really is one or the other. And I realized that when I was putting this together.
Yeah, I, I guess I wanted to bring up that aspect of it because it, it's something that's come up in the code rewrite. And I think it's a good goal to simplify open space. I mean, you, you'll actually have properties in the BCD and then the historic district where you have open space provisions. It's one thing when the overlay zoning completely overrides everything. You just have clear goal that you can meet. But there are cases where you have specific streetscapes to meet and three different overlays in three different parts of the code. And it's just very, it's, it's not easy.
Commissioner, the overlays do make life hard for developers. That's well known. And they can get complicated because they are going to force compliance based on their new matrix over the underlying zoning.
Dan, can I interrupt? Peter's trying to get in. He says he's raised his hand a couple of times.
So ultimately, it does boil down to either it's a percentage or it's triggered by something, or it's a combination of both. And the overlays don't help.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Wieland.
Just kind of curious, when we're going to increase the bonus property as far as with the new update code, kind of, it'll be interesting seeing how a future developer plays with the open space. When we're telling them, okay, well, if you give us more affordable housing, we're going to give you more houses. But we're going to still hold you to this open space. I mean, land's finite, Santa Fe and this round and area. So kind of doesn't seem like they're going to coincide very well.
Yeah, especially after the hotspots that you just saw and what you guys, how you guys think of that. And how open space plays a part in that whole dynamic as we start building out Santa Fe or continue to build out Santa Fe.
I think we need to let the record reflect that Commissioner Smith is attending by Zoom. And yes, he was present, but he hadn't, wasn't brought up as a participant. Now, that's, that's an interesting question in terms of how limited space, how it all, all the numbers fit.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
I just, my question, and I, I have been here for about forty five minutes. I'm not quite sure what went wrong, but anyway, I've enjoyed listening. To ask Dan and the person who reported, is what I perceive to be the tension between changing density requirements and these open space, open space code, is that, parts of the code, is that one of the, one of the, a significant issue that we're going to face going forward is how to align the two or integrate the two?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, open space definitely has a impact on what you can build on the property because it does take property away from the developer. So I'm going to venture to say that that open space is going to be a continued conversation as we move things forward. I'm not quite sure I recall what, if there were any edits that affected open space in this current edition, I'd have to, I'd have to rely on probably Maggie, who's in the audience now, if she's able to talk.
Thanks, Dan. And Commissioners, yeah, hi. Can everybody hear me? I don't, you know, and if Daniel's still in the, in the hall too, I don't think we touched upon, you know, changing the standards for, for open space in phase one. But I, I think that we've hopefully done a better job of organizing those and putting them in the right spot because they're pretty well spread out and, you know, in, in overlays and, and in different areas of the code. But I think in phase two, we definitely want to look at, and I think as we, you know, sometimes look at the standards of the open space, you know, that we do require, Dan mentioned the dimensional standards of twelve feet for some and fifteen feet for others. And then further defining what usable means. We talk about that a lot. You know, what, what are we looking for with open space? We've, we've also talked about, you know, do we want to, you know, promote or encourage art in our open spaces? You know, public art as well as, you know, a type of amenity for, for these type of developments. So I think there's a lot to consider and hopefully streamline and make the, the process a little clearer to deliver, you know, a, a more simple process for identifying open space and then producing a higher quality open space where we need it to, you know, cut down on some of the, you know, impacts of, of not having quality open space like Heat Island or, you know, connectivity issues as well, I think, between and among developments that we see. So those are some of my thoughts on, on what we might think about doing in phase two. But I don't think we, we touched upon it too much in phase one. So. Thanks, Dan. Any, yeah.
Thanks, Maggie. Any other questions or comments?
Madam Chair.
Yes. Mr. Miranda.
I suppose a question to Maggie on, I, I thought that the proposed incentive for affordable housing made modification to open space. I believe it does. So I think that does address the, to some degree.
Yeah, I think they, they talk about open space and lot coverage in there. And I do want to point out too, like I was, when, when, thank you, Shabba, when Dan was given the, the presentation, or when Janice was given the presentation, you know, what we do see a lot of the times is that the multi family developments generally don't have a problem meeting our current open space standards. You know, I think the, the requirement for Casa Verde was something around fifty thousand square feet of open space and they were able to provide well over a hundred thousand square feet of open space. So, you know, when you think about it like that, maybe it's not going to be such a problem. But it's more, I think, sometimes on those smaller lots like Dan was talking about where, you know, you want to go over forty percent. So in more of like subdivision, single family homes, when you want to go over forty percent lot coverage, you have to then, you know, find open space on your individual lot to meet those standard requirements. And that sometimes can be a little bit tricky. So, Dan, you want to add anything?
Yeah, Commissioner, Commissioner Clow, members of the commission. What you'll typically see and what we see all the time, and we don't really have the ability to force those changes on them because that's their, that's their application to you, is most developers will create the smallest lot possible for the maximum house they can build so that they have a fifteen foot rear yard setback. They meet the seven foot front yard setback and the five foot side yard setbacks. And that's not even enough to put a shed. That's not enough to put a guest house. That's not enough to put many of the accessory dwelling units that other larger properties have the ability to do because they weren't planned out to be maxed out. And that's, that's the difference when you have somebody who may live in a, a smaller subdivision, high density subdivision, but that in order for that pencil as a developer identifies, they make, you don't have the, the room to even add open space because they've, they may have already added that open space just to max out the house. And many times we see that as well, that they use that fifteen, fifteen foot landscape or fifteen foot setback requirement to the rear as their permanent open space. And then that stops any kind of development that can happen in the rear. So there's no sheds, no nothing because it doesn't allow for it. So that's, there, there's where the problems are. And usually that's not disclosed at the point of sale. And when people go in there and they start as, I don't know if, if it's in your family, I know in mine, we just, sometimes we just go out and somehow we have a house full of stuff and they go in the shed. And we have enough room for a shed, but that may not be the case for everyone.
Anything else? If not, thank you, Jamis. Good presentation. It'll be interesting to see how that plays out in the rewrite of code. Okay, now we'll move on to new business, which is case number twenty twenty three, seven, six, five, three. Vacation of a forty foot wide public right of way and a thirty eight wide public right of way. Mr. Escobal, you're presenting this or Janice is also?
And, and Madam Chair, if I could just address the commission briefly, thank you. So I'd said earlier that this would just be a discussion item, but hadn't quite landed for me that they had notices of a public hearing, the applicant had. So which would just mean that if there's members of the public who would like to speak or witnesses who would like to testify, then the chair could allow that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is a vacation request in Monte Serena subdivision. Case number is twenty twenty three dash seven, six, five, three. And formal description for this request is the vacation of a forty four foot wide public right of way and a thirty eight foot wide public right of way. Carl Summer is the agent for Twenty One Club Holdings LLC, the owner. And they are requesting approval to vacate the forty four foot wide public right of way, which is Bel Canto Way, and a thirty eight foot wide public right of way, which is Vitoska, within phase four E of Monte Serena subdivision. This is located west of Highway two eighty five, north of Tanna Road and within the suburban archaeological review district. On September sixteenth, twenty twenty four, the Public Works and Utilities Committee recommended that the planning commission approve case twenty twenty three, seven, dash, seven, six, five, three. The vacation that I just described, which I will not repeat, subject to two conditions listed in section two, table one of the technical corrections. This will require one motion, and that is to approve or deny case twenty twenty three dash seven, six, five, three. Vacation of a forty four foot wide public right of way and thirty eight foot wide public right of way, identified as Bel Canto Way and Vitoska respectively, within phase four E two of Monte Serena. The location of this proposal is in the northern end of the city. You can see that the property is centralized with Village Drive, a loop road, which is within Monte Serena. And the request here is to eliminate all lots for phase four E of Monte Serena subdivision with a consolidation plat. And this is an administrative review process. However, the vacation of dedicated public rights of way cannot be approved administratively. They require a planning commission approval, excuse me, and a recommendation from the Public Works and Utilities Committee. So if approved, the property vacated is proposed in this request to become a private open space. The applicant has complied with all process requires for, requirements for a vacation. The ENN was held on May twenty eighth of twenty twenty four. And staff finds that the applicant has adequately addressed the required criteria for a vacation. There was no opposition to the proposed request. And the land use department therefore recommends the Public Works Committee recommendation to the planning commission for approval of case twenty twenty three dash seven, six, five, three. Vacation of a forty four foot wide public right of way and thirty eight foot wide public right of way, subject to the technical corrections identified in table one of the staff report you have before you. The proposed request will satisfy chapter twenty three dash one point two B two also regarding revisionary right, reversionary rights to the grantors by operation of law. While there is no text on the plat specific to a reversionary right of the dedicated right of way in this case, where a municipality extinguishes or abandons a right to use land as a street or highway, the landowners are entitled to immediate possession of the premises embraced within the street. And the case law cited here by the city attorney's office is Lane versus Stab. concludes our presentation. I'm available for questions.
Any questions, my Commissioners? Thank you. Mr. Summers.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I don't have anything to add. I think the staff has covered everything very well and explained it all.
Can you, I'd like you to just explain like, what's the purpose of this?
Certainly. Why don't you, for me, and?
State your name and address for the record. Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you have in reference to this item shall be the truth, nothing but the truth, and do this under the penalties of perjury?
I do.
And perhaps if we can pull up that map so you could
Sure.
explain what's going on.
There is a, this, these two roadways are currently platted, but they're not developed. And the developer has put up the bond for the infrastructure to record the plat. These are two very sensitive ridges that run in between two other ridges. And they're filled with, it's, it's basically a pineon forest that runs right through the middle of this development. And the property owners along a, a good portion of this have gotten have gotten together and made a deal with the developer to vacate that right-of-way, not build the roads, not build the houses. And the developer has made a decision to do the same thing on Vitoska. So the owners on Belcanto Way have gotten together to acquire this from the developer. The developer has independently decided that he would like to, or it would like to, uh, uh, vacate the roadway and vacate the right-of-way and preserve that. You should all know that the trails that are platted on the easement, that are platted easements, trail easements, there are going to be preserved and really kind of enhanced because they're built right now in locations that they're not, um, there are no easements for. We're going to preserve the easements right where the trails have been built and maintained. And they're exactly where a trail should go. They go down the ridges and they, they stay in near ravines and they're, they've got a very, uh, well-developed trail network and those will be preserved for the use of, of people.
Okay, now, now I understand. Okay, any, um, any questions from any of the commissioners? Okay, if not, we'll open this up for, um, public hearing. Is there anyone, well, there's no one here in the building, but is there anyone on Zoom that would like to, um, make a comment?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, so far there are no hands raised.
Um, seeing as there's no one here in, present, um, to provide comments and no one has raised their hand on Zoom, we'll close the public, um, comment section and we'll move to, um, open this up to commissioners for comments or a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve case 2023-7653, the vacation of a 44-foot wide public right-of-way and a 38-foot wide right-of-way, Belcanto Way and Vitoska, subject to the technical corrections.
Commissioner Smith, did you second?
Yes.
Sort of sounded like it.
Okay, I'll, I'll start with Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Reeland?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Morando?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Motion's passed.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Now we'll.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Good presentation. Um, we'll move to matters from the commission. Any matters from the commission?
Any update on the deposition? We're going to receive that sometime soon.
Well, just, I'll say I haven't heard anything about a deposition. Um, I guess I also wanted to add that, um, uh, we're, uh, we're trying to, um, keep the, uh, communications to being basically like a, a one-way communication to avoid a, a discussion on something that's not on the agenda item. So, um, uh, any of us are always, uh, happy to answer questions, um, at any time, you know, i- if, if you need to reach out to us, uh, outside of the hearing. But, um, uh, within the public hearing, we'll try to, to keep it to things that are specifically on the, the agenda. Thank you.
I just have one comment and that is, um, Commissioner, um, Smith and I were not present at the September 16th meeting. But, so that, both he and I need to review the, um, YouTube, um, video of the meeting so that, um, when we have our meeting, our next meeting this month, we're up to speed with the rest of the commissioners. We'll both do that. Anything else?
Uh, none for me. Uh, let's see, uh, I'm not sure if Heather, uh, or Maggie would like to add anything?
Um, yes, Chair Clow, it's, it's Maggie. I just want to, um, thank everybody for, um, stepping up. I had to, um, step away from Santa Fe for a, a few weeks. Um, I'm going to be home in Michigan and, um, just really appreciate that I'm able to still work a bit and join you guys, uh, and keep connected, while I'm, um, attending to some family things. So, thank you. And please, you know, commissioners, feel free to reach out. Uh, I'm working intermittently, um, and will be, you know, available, uh, on and off. And I have the wonderful two-hour time difference too, so that makes it all very interesting. I'm getting up very early and working very late, so. But thank you, guys. Just wanted you to know where I was.
And I have nothing else. Thank you. You have a good evening.
Thank you, Heather. Um, anything else? If not, we'll adjourn.